Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the one in six year road and bridge improvement program public hearing for Lancaster County. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, we have fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brankman and Deb Shore. On our, my right, we have Vice Chair and Fellow Commissioner Bill Avery. Commissioner Roma Amundson should be joining us momentarily. Also joining us from the County Clerk's office is the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren and Corey Beatty, the Chief Deputy, as well as from the County Engineer's Office, we have the County Engineer Pam Dingman. So would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additional copy of all written material to be discussed today's meeting is available with the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the Kennedy's website at lancaster.gov. And we have one item on the agenda this evening, and that's a public hearing. This is for the one in six year road and bridge improvement program from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023.
Okay. Going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the one in six year road and bridge improvement program. First, a few housekeeping items based off of the agenda. We will limit each speaker to five minutes, and if that needs to be extended, it will be done so at my discretion. But we have quite a few people who have signed up, so if we could limit the comments to five minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. That way, everyone in attendance would be allowed the opportunity to make comments. And if there are any follow-up questions, we can certainly address those at the time. One item that I think needs to be clarified is this is a public hearing forum, and so the purpose of which is for us to hear from you. While there may be some follow-up questions, because of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, we are not able to do anything that's not on the agenda. So we will not be taking any action tonight. The purpose of this meeting is to really hear from you and hear your concerns, and so that we can then address them at a follow-up meeting, probably a staff meeting, which happens every Thursday at 8:30, next door in Room 113, the Bill Luxford Studio. And that is a public meeting, and it would be subject to the Open Meetings Act and public notification. So while unfortunately, we won't be able to take any actions tonight, please be assured that we will follow up and have those conversations in a public setting where the public would be invited to participate. We would also possibly have a discussion at a Tuesday staff, or excuse me, a Tuesday board meeting, which again is also here in this room and is also an open meeting, and it will be every Tuesday at nine o'clock. With that, I would like to turn it over to the County Engineer Pam Dingman for opening remarks.
Pam, I think I'll go ahead and swear again. Do you solemnly swear for the testimony you're about to give as the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. First of all, I'd like to start tonight by thanking all of you for giving up your Tuesday evening to be here in support of roads and bridges in Lancaster County. You know, as elected officials, many of us sit here in this room at least once a week when only elected officials are present. And so we are your government, and it is really exciting to see you here, even if you tell me things that I don't like. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna lay that out to you up front, okay? So Angela, if you could start the PowerPoint. So as I said, I am Pam Dingman. I am a licensed engineer. That is a requirement by state statute for me to be a licensed engineer. And I have been the county engineer now for almost four years. I also wanted to take a brief moment to introduce my staff that is present, so that you can know who might be in charge of roads in your area or what their expertise is. So I'd like to ask my staff that's in the room to stand. Awesome. Thanks for coming tonight, everybody. So stay standing. Sometimes they don't follow directions. Okay, can you guys stay standing so I can introduce, introduce you and then sit down when I say your name? I know, I'm sorry, once again. Bob Jacobs, Bob, if you could give a wave, is our Supervisor of Maintenance, so he's responsible for all maintenance activities within Lancaster County. Next to him is Jerry Penry. Jerry is a licensed surveyor and really helps us out with all of our historic documents. He's an expert on all of those in Lancaster County, and he does a great job. Thank you, gentlemen. Harold Baker is in the Southwest District, is Maintenance Supervisor. Next to him is Mike Clark, who's the Northwest District. Did you guys all sat together? This was really nice. Curtis Piccone, who is the Northeast District and also the state champion skid loader operator, right? He has a jacket to prove it, so, which is awesome. Jeff Mansky is, is the Southeast District. Chad Packard, who has the eyeball tie tonight, is our Bridge Engineer, and so he does a great job, and the nastier the bridge, the more creative this guy gets. And so we really have him to thank for, for a lot of our bridge, bridge fixes in Lancaster County. Continuing around the room, we have Jim Shikowski, who is our Right-Away Agent, and Jim Palucic. The Jims sat together tonight too, huh? Jim is our Construction Engineer and oversees all of our construction activity. In the back, we have my deputy, the County Surveyor, Ken Schroeder, and Eric Hubbell, who is in charge of GIS at Lancaster County Engineering. Ron Bohati, who is the Assistant Maintenance Supervisor. And Karen, did you sit down? Karen Wilson, who is a great new addition this last year to the Lancaster County staff. She's an engineer with, with right around 20 years' experience in hydraulics and hydrology, and we, we have a lot of water problems in Lancaster County, so I'm glad I talked her into joining the staff. And so, thank you to all the staff tonight. So in putting this together tonight, I always think it's important that we look back in history, and we can find a lot from where we've been to where we're going forward. So one of my predecessors way back, Arthur Edgren, about 100 years ago, really moved Lancaster County forward in a number of ways, and I think we still benefit from the things he did today. What I think is interesting is Edgren was really nationally recognized by leading Lancaster County to have the best road system in the nation. And so here's an article from 1921 where it's saying Lancaster has become famous for good roads. And I think that is really, is really a statement from, considering where we're at today. He was also the one who created snow removal in Lancaster County, the very first person to remove snow actually statewide. It wasn't a service that was provided, and I think it's a service that we're all thankful for today. And Angela, if you can go to the next slide for me. In addition to that, he created concrete street markers because he was concerned about safety on the roads once the automobile had started driving our roads. And so he created these markers for drivers who may be unfamiliar when they were traveling from point A to point B. I think what is significant about Arthur Edgren's time is he worked along with the Board to bring the county roads up to standard for automobiles. And when we think about what that must have been, he did that in 10 years. And in 10 years' time, we went from 1908 roughly, where the first Model T came out, to the 19, to where in the 1920s, there had been 15 million cars, 15 million automobiles on our street. And it's not different than our current day challenge as we're looking at automated cars and more automated cars and, and some additional things in our vehicles that we're going to have to continue to pay attention to if we want to modernize and take this county into the next level with our roads. What's interesting about the times of Arthur Edgren is if you look at the percentage of the total budget that went to roads and bridges, during that time period, it was 30 to 40% of the total budget went to roads and bridges. And I think that that, that really says a lot for, for where we're at. Today, less than 15% of the total budget goes to roads and bridges. And so, you know, incrementally, we, we are falling behind with the financing of our infrastructure, which by the way, is a national problem, is a national problem, whether you are on either of the coast or in the center of this country. Our needs far outweigh the funding. So what is the one in six? And by state statute, we have to have this meeting. It's required, we have it by law. The one in six is to promote orderly development, so that we don't have spot development or focused projects maybe where they're not important to the public or meet our needs. But in addition, I think the most important thing I can note about the one in six is I have people call me every day and say, "Well, do you know that road is not good? Do you know that bridge is not good?" And I have to say, "Yeah, I do." And they say, "Well, why don't you fix it?" I don't have the assets to fix it right now, sadly. The one in six is physically constrained, so it's against the law for me to come forward and put a project on the one in six that we don't have the money to fund. So if the estimated engineering and construction costs are higher than my budget, I can't put that in the one in six. And it's the one because that's what I'm going to do this current budget year, and then years two through six, I have to project the money I currently have forward. So that is what the current plan has, and again, I know that many of you are going to talk about projects tonight that I would like to do that I simply don't have the funding to do. I'm going to talk a little bit about, and Angela, if you wanted to go to the exhibits on the roadways, maybe if we could talk a little bit about modernization before I go, I'm just going to step back. Do you have the map that looks like this, Angela? Yeah, okay, thanks. So Angela is finding that map. What I want you to know is the public is, although my funding is very limited, I continue to strive to modernize and make this department more efficient. Some of the changes are bigger than others. This is an example of the change. This is a radio. It is a GPS radio. When I turn it on, it sends a signal so that at the county, they know exactly where I'm at. It's just not in our handheld radios. It's also in our vehicles. This helps us track when we're doing snow removal and remove the snow more efficiently, and it helps us track our workers from day to day, so that if we do have a road emergency, we can look at our map, figure out where all the people are, and send the person that is the closest. In addition to that, we have also improved our road counters. We used to have what I call the dumb counters, which was just a hose across the road. It gave us one piece of data. If that data, it didn't give us a lot of other information on it. We now have the smart counter system, that we started buying the smarter counters, which can tell us axles and whether it was trucks or cars going by, and what the median speed was of those vehicles, and, and then every hour through the day when they're coming by. And it was really interesting for me with the smart counters to learn that our, some of our high-speed times, especially in the south part of Lancaster County, are at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, because we have some street racers out there apparently. And so we took that information from our counters, and we shared it with the Sheriff's Department, and we were able to focus on where we had some of that activity. Maybe not the full intent of what I intended to do with the counters, but it is helping us, in particular, it's helping us know what our truck traffic is, and we have a lot of agricultural truck traffic in Lancaster County. So in addition to that, we're looking at a number of GIS projects, and I'll just hold up my exhibit. Something like this, this looks like a really nerdy map to the audience, and it is, but this map has helped us focus our bridge inspections associated with rainfall data. So that instead of when it rains, going out and doing 24 critical inspections, we can do three. That enables us to stay in the office and really focus on designing and making these things better. So roads and road needs. The map that Angela has put up on your screens out there shows our roads that have more than 300 cars a day, and we really know, if you talk to any of the maintenance guys, that that is where the road starts to fall apart, when we have more than 300 cars or trucks on that road. And so as you look at this map, you'll notice that we have a lot of areas in red. Those are roads that we haven't graded for modern traffic yet, so we've fallen behind in. Blue are roads that are over 300 cars a day that we have graded for modern traffic. Ruts, rural to urban transition section, really is that 98th Street corridor from Old Cheney to A Street. It has been graded for a full four-lane divided section per that agreement with the city, and it does currently have somewhere around 700 cars a day on it. You'll see, and this is my, my stashed lingo for radar roads, roads that should be on our radar, that maybe we've had some high counts, maybe we've had some low counts. We have found with the modern counters that, that we are getting some different counts that we didn't necessarily anticipate when we switched out those counters, and so we're going to continue to look at that. Angela, if you want to give me the next map? The graded roads ready for paving. So this is a map showing roads that we have graded in anticipation for paving, and I'm going to apologize to anyone in the audience in advance who this happened to. My, in a previous administration, when they acquired Right-Away and graded a road, they would say, "Hey, we're going to grade it this year, and we're going to pave it next year." And I'll run into people who, who will say, "Well, you know, you bought that right away from me 20 years ago to pave that road, and you haven't done it yet." And, and that's true. So up here, in blue, are roads that are graded and ready for pavement. It's easier for us to do those than the roads that aren't graded, by the way. It's sad that we're now falling to the point where we know we need to pave it, and we haven't graded it yet. And Angela, one more. The next slide for rec roads, Angela? There we go. So the rec road slide is very interesting in Lancaster County. So all of the roads in red are state recreation roads, and the state is supposed to share the cost on those with us, 80/20. It had been 90/10, they went to 80/20. The road that we're going to do with the state this year, they're doing 60/40. I couldn't get better than 60, and they have told me that they don't have more money in that fund to help us out. I'm going to continue to approach the state for paving on rec roads. It is a problem for us. We have over 40 miles of rec road that we should be sharing expenses with on those. Unfortunately, the state has the same issues that we have with budget constraints. And the dirt road map? There we go. Interestingly enough, Lancaster County has about 1,100 miles of gravel around the county. It makes us one of the largest counties in our state. We have about 300 miles that we've currently paved, but on this map is kind of our, our lost roads. These roads are still dirt, so they've never been graded for gravel, and they've never been paved. And some of them are on the, the county section lines. We have over 50 miles of these non-graded, non-paved roads. This was a problem for us during the eclipse, when we had all the people in town, and we had three drivers, and I'll just say God bless these people, all from New York City, out to see the eclipse in Lancaster County. It had rained, they followed each other onto the dirt road, because that's what their GPS said. They sank down to their axles and had to be towed out, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that was a good tourism moment for us. But, and, and the, the people from New York said that when they saw the sign that said gravel ends, they thought that meant that pavement would begin. It, in Lancaster County, that means we're to the dirt, and you know, you, it, really it's against the rules to drive on those roads, I think for 72 hours after rainfall. So that is a concern to us in Lancaster County. And something you always need to tell the young, the young drivers, if you see that gravel ends, don't, don't go down that way. And I think Roma, during the flooding, you and I accidentally went down one of those roads and very quickly turned around. So do you have the ADT map, Angela? So this is the ADT map. I know that some of you said, "Hey Pam, I saw your maps outside, like there's no way I can see those." And I'm going to apologize for that. They are on our website, so you can blow them up. The ADT map is the average daily traffic count, and so we rotate our counters around the county. We try to get every road counted every five years. If we know there's really nothing going on in an area, we might skip a year. If we know we have a lot of stuff going on, we might count a road more than once. So one of those roads we've counted more than once this year was Rockabye Road between 14th Street and Highway 77. We had, the first time we counted it, we had a little under 1,000 cars. Once the city closed the additional road up at the Old Cheney 14th Street, we had about 2,500 cars a day on that stretch of road and its gravel. And so I, I will tell you, I'm not going to look at paving that road, and you might say like, "Oh, my gosh." And the reason is, that's a road that's ultimately closed when the South Beltway comes around. And so we're going to kind of limp along with it for what we have. And then the, back to the PowerPoint, Angela? So if I'm to look at Lancaster County's roads, I just need to flip one page back. We know currently, based on our, our assessments of our asphalt, of our 300 miles, I have put my asphalt inventory books up front here, if anyone is interested in looking at them besides me and my staff. We do go ahead and inspect all the asphalt every year, and we give it a rating on a 100-point scale, and it is graded on about 10 different categories. This is a proven asphalt rating system. We know that 79 miles of our asphalt need to be overlaid right now. We have four subdivisions that we know need to be overlaid. It's a new thing for us to overlay subdivisions, although we were taking over the maintenance of them for about 20 years. We didn't overlay one until last year. And so the time is coming when that asphalt is wearing out, and we're going to have to start overlaying it. In addition to that, we know based on traffic counts that we need about 28 miles of additional paving in Lancaster County. So next slide, Angela? Can we go to the structurally deficient bridges? So this is a quick exhibit of our structural, if we're, if we're to look at our two parts, roads and bridges, this is a exhibit of our structurally deficient bridges. I may add that our bridges are structurally deficient, scour critical, fracture critical, or functionally obsolete, or posted. Some of them, if it's a really bad bridge, it may be all of those, and so, which is unfortunate. Angela, you want to switch to the scour critical bridge map? So this is a map by district of the county of our scour critical bridges. Many of our scour critical bridges, and what that really means is that in the, in a storm, these bridges have a tendency to have the soil behind the abutments wash away, which makes the bridge no longer stable. The reason most of the bridges that are closed in Lancaster County are closed right now is because they failed a scour critical inspection. And we know that once they get to that point, sometimes we can go in and repair them, sometimes we can't. So do you want to switch to the fracture critical bridges, Angela? So fracture critical, and this last year, and I'm sure this person isn't in the audience because I don't, I don't see him, but I had a gentleman call me and say, "Well, you have that old steel bridge, the old, if it's a steel bridge, the old truss bridges, and you have it weight rated for 10 tons and max." And I, I drive my, I drive my grain trailer over that all the time, and I haven't fallen in. And I'm just going to tell you that the bridge doesn't always fall in on the violator, and so, and I said to this gentleman, you know, just because you haven't fallen in yet doesn't mean you won't. There was a dramatic bridge failure of one of those old truss bridges in Iowa this year, where the truck did end up in the creek, and the driver was okay, but he, he may have been a little shaken. So, so when we look at fracture critical, that's those old steel bridges. The reason they're fracture critical is because they fail suddenly. There's no redundancy in them, and when they go, they just go. And we, we do have, we do have several of those, and I just always want the public to be aware that we mean it when we put a posting of a weight on these bridges, we're Functionally obsolete bridges, Angela? So these are bridges that they may not be wide enough to carry a modern vehicle, they may not, they might not have the right sides for them to work. We have some of those too. And then posted bridges, Angela? So there's a lot of discussion when we talk about posted bridges, and if it's posted, if you see a three-ton posted in front of a bridge, that's your car. And so I always think it's interesting, even for us at the county with posted bridges, we had the, the State Patrol come out and weigh some of our trucks, so that we were sure that we were compliant. It's always interesting how many people have no idea how much their vehicle really weighs. And so three tons, that's for me and, and my heritage, that's like me and like two of my good-sized relatives in a car, or an unloaded pickup truck. And it, that's not a lot of weight. And you know, the same as you incrementally go up and look at 10 tons. We have some of these structures that can't pass a concrete truck or a garbage truck, and that remains a concern for us. And then closed bridges? So this is the exhibit of bridges that are closed. Many of these bridges, we are working on doing replacement. This last year, we were able to replace six bridges with box culverts. I need you to take. I don't know if I could. Excuse me. We were able to replace, some of these bridges with box culverts at about a third the price. So if we could go back to the PowerPoint, Angela? And the bridge conditions. So we know that we have 27 structurally deficient bridges, 24 scour critical bridges, and a total of nine that are currently closed. Next slide, Angela? Then last year, I sadly discovered what I'm going to call the combo structures. So these are structures where my predecessors, maybe it was a box culvert, and they stuck a pipe in it, maybe it was a bridge, and they put a box culvert on either end. This is what has happened to 148th Street. So, excuse me. So 148th Street has three WPA-era bridges that the rails were cut off and they were buried. So 148th Street has three WPA-era bridges that the rails were cut off and they were buried. And we actually did some investigation on them about last year, just about Thanksgiving time. And we discovered that theoretically, these bridges should have failed under their own weight. That's a real bad deal. We were able to work with the University of Nebraska and the Department of Roads to get, to study these bridges and get them back open, but we are replacing them right now. We have 83 such structures in the county and they remain a concern to me. And we're going to have to look at those. You go on to culverts, Angela? So on culverts, we have 6,900 pipes in Lancaster County. And one of the things that my staff spent the last three years doing was we had no active inspection system of those pipes. We now do. We now have inspected everyone and we have photo documentation so that we can better prioritize what we're replacing and when we're replacing it. But in addition to our box culverts, to our pipes, we have 1,000 box culverts. And they have no inventory if they're less than 20 feet. We're currently working on getting those into an inventory so that we can prioritize their replacement. So with that, I'd like to talk about the 1 and 6 and where we're going with the 1 and 6. So, this year, on our, on our, our completion plan was Adams Street. Adams Street is almost complete. Before it got cold, we were able to get the paint on it so that, so that we have a chance of opening it this winter. I'm trying to get the sides of the road backfilled because right now they have an eight-inch drop-off, which if you ran your car off the edge of that, you're going to have a really hard time correcting your car to get back on it. So that's why that road is still closed, why we're finishing it. In addition to that, we overlaid a number of roads around the county on bridge maintenance. We are working on stabilizing the embankment of H-66, Bridge D-88 on Agnew Road, and Bridge H-120 on 176th Street. In addition to that, on our bridge to box culvert plan, we have, we are in the process of replacing Bridge G-111, Bridge G-144, F-225, G-143, H-130, and H-128. The last three of those are those combo structures I just talked about. So, if you give me the next slide. Just a quick slide for what it takes to stabilize one of these bridges. This is Bridge H-120 on 176th Street. I've nicknamed it my bad boyfriend bridge because it, it is a very good-looking bridge, but it is bad in every way. True story, I know that is engineering humor, so thanks for laughing. I appreciate that. So it is structurally deficient, functionally obsolete, fracture critical, and scour critical. So, we spent some time this summer anchoring this bridge back in to ensure that the people that live around it could use it for, could, could use it. And I know that Peggy Brown, I could call it the Peggy Brown Bridge, but I think it, because Peggy is here, because she lives by this bridge. It may be more fun to call it the bad boyfriend bridge, though, just saying. Oh, well, thank you, Ms. Rome. Some of the other projects in 2007, some projects were delayed because we still are waiting on FEMA reimbursements from the 2015 flood. And so, a lot of people don't realize that FEMA is a reimbursement program. So that means I have to fix it first and then try to get the money. And they are difficult to get money out of. And so we're still waiting on about half a million dollars of FEMA reimbursements for things like removing debris and putting rock back on the roads. And that continues to be frustrating. In addition to that, I have two projects that had received Nebraska Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grants. However, the grants remain unfunded. And now that we've had, had a second disaster declared, excuse me, declared in Sarpy County, NEMA said they were going to put all our bridges back in a pile with everyone else's and reselect. So I haven't heard yet if we've been reselected, although I was kind of bummed about having to go back in the pile. And then, lastly, Bridge C-91 that was on this year's list, along with an overlay on Raymond Road, was not able to be constructed because Nebraska Department of Roads asked us to delay it one year while they worked on Highway 79. Just a few quick pictures of some of our projects from 2017. The slow sign, along with the void, I know that I did hear from a lot of constituents about closing this bridge on 148th and then reopening it. This was a void that we discovered when we went, went out to, to check this bridge. And so we did have to close 148th and pack back in the dirt in order to stabilize this area. Do you want to hit the next one, Angela? So for projects proposed for 2018, as I move to, to the next year, we're looking at paving 98th Street from Old Cheney up to A Street. This stretch has about 700 cars a day on it. And it is very difficult to maintain. And it's very difficult to actually even get the grader on it to, to, to try to stabilize it at all. In addition to that, it was grade to the, graded to the rut system, rolled to urban transition section. So it has a 42-foot top. And the gravel, as we initially placed it, hasn't really behaved. And so now we have, instead of a 24-foot wide gravel road, we have a 40-foot wide gravel road, which is also creating a lot of issues for us. We do plan on overlaying a number of roads in Lancaster County next year, based on our asphalt inventory. We may have to reduce the overlays based on if we get that FEMA reimbursement or not. And that has really been something that's happened to me for two years now. Next year, the bridges, I hope to, to be able to rehab and get open again. C-91, which is on First and Raymond Road, really wanted to replace. This year, I, I waited the request of the state. B-147, which is up, up in the north eastern part of the county, is closed. We'd like to replace that with a box culvert. E-117, which is in the northwestern part of the county, was a flood damaged bridge. We'd like to replace with a box culvert. N-19 is on West Pioneers, currently closed. We'd like to replace that with a box culvert. You may notice a theme there. Bridge to box, we know it's a third, the cost. Major bridge maintenance on Bridge O-145. This is on Pioneers in the Wilderness Park area. We're going to do that in conjunction with the City of Lincoln Stormwater Department and as well, as well as with the NRD. We know that in many places during the flood of 2015, the Salt Creek itself dropped about three feet. And so now what we have is all of those little tributaries, they want to drop three feet too. And, and our bridges just really can't, can't deal with that. We have a number of culverts we're going to replace next year as we look at our culvert replacement program. And then Angela, if we could move to 2018? And then as I look at our money projected out, 2018 to 2022, we're still working with the state on a safety project for Saltillo Road. And the state has told me that I won't probably officially hear from them until February or March. I look forward to hearing from them on this project. They have agreed to, with me that we have a problem, a safety problem on Saltillo. And we're going to, we're going to look at entering an agreement with them, as well as with the City of Lincoln, to work on Saltillo from 14th to about 58th Street. And then 68th Street, we have in the 1 and 6. I want people to know that when we go and put shoulders on the roads, it means we have to buy right-of-way and we have to bring in more dirt and grade. So it does become very expensive. I think we've estimated it right now somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars a, a mile to put the shoulders on. So 68th Street is in the two through six years, getting that mile and a half north of Hickman into town. Pavement, I have continued concerns that we have to pave 54th Street because if they build the Beltway, Hickman has to have some direct paved route into town. And so that remains in the two through six years. 162nd Street, I have really concerns that it was graded in 1978 as a farm-to-market road. We know it currently has about 400 trucks a day on it. And so it is very hard for us to maintain. These trucks tear it up. Plus, if we were to pave 162nd Street from Highway 6 to the county line, it connects with paving in two other counties and it gives this whole region a lot more connectivity. Southwest 14th Street, in the southeastern part of the county, we have a two-mile stretch of that. For some reason, we paved one mile and we didn't have the money to pave the other two miles years ago. I'd really like to connect that pavement-to-pavement connection. I think makes a lot of sense for us. And then we need to look at the engineering of 98th Street, A to O. And we bought the right-of-way for that several years ago. And it remains an unopened section line road. Again, for connectivity, for Lincoln and Lancaster County, that is important. As well as 98th Street, Adams to Holdridge, we know that that stretch also has over 400 cars a day on it. We have several bridges that we're looking at in the years two through six. One of them is Bridge F-88. Bridge F-88 has actually been on our 1 and 6 plan since the late 90s, since the late 90s. It is a bad bridge. It's located on North 14th Street, about two miles north of Stonebridge Creek. And then although we don't have any money in the South Beltway, we still, we have 26 road connections in the future with it that we'll need to coordinate with Department of Roads as we go on. And in the East Beltway, we still are running the risk of corridor protection. So that is a protected corridor, should it be funded by the state or federal government. When people, when that land comes up for development, we look and see whether we need to use it and buy it, or whether we can let that corridor protection go. So with that, that concludes my presentation to you on my 1 and 6 roadway plan. And we can start with, with public information. I will let the commissioners and the public know, I have provided 11 by 17 copies of all of the maps that were in the presentation upfront. So if somebody wants to put a map on the overhead when they talk about their area and point to it, we can do that.
And then just as a matter of housekeeping, county clerk will call up names who have signed in, three at a time. And if they would come forward, that way they can be ready in the front row to present the information. And the county clerk has been keeping a list of all those that have signed in. If anyone in the audience has not signed in and wishes to speak, please see Cory in the back of the room and add themselves to the list. With that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the first testifier?
The first three names are Don Biggerstaff, Solo Mwanda, and Kent Hybrink.
Hi.
I'll need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the proof?
Yes. My name is Don Biggerstaff. I live at 1909 North 98th Street, which is between Holdridge and Adams. And my concern with this, that road is safety. When we were first out there, before Lincoln grew around us, it was fine. But with Lincoln encroaching both sides, the traffic has increased huge amounts. And the biggest concern I have is the dust and visibility. And I don't know if we can do something about that. But we've had an incident where a school bus and a kid getting on the bus just about got hit. There's a lot of times we get truck traffic going down the road and you literally can hardly see the cars coming on head-on to you, even with their headlights. It's a big problem and I just don't want to see anybody get hurt. And I don't know if it's the type of dirt or what, but it's, it's bad. And the other problem, when we do get heavy rains, the, the road with the trucks and everything on it, my mother-in-law won't even come out to my house because she's afraid she'll get stuck in the mud.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing? You don't have to answer that.
No comment. But anyway, that's, that's all I have. And if there's some way of moving that up to get it paved sooner, I would be very happy to have that happen. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, your testimony.
Oh, I have one other thing. There's several people.
Can you come back? Will you please stand up to the microphone so we can get you on the record?
There are several people here from my stretch of road that are here to support. And could you please stand up? Thank you.
And I would just point out that for those that are here that do not feel comfortable testifying in person, please feel free to email us at any time, especially right now while we're doing this. We would go ahead and add it to the public record. And then the email address is commish, C-O-M-M-I-S-H, at lancaster.inny.gov. And again, that would be included as written testimony, in addition to verbal testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Well, my name is Solo Mwani. I'm the lead pastor at Lincoln City Church. First of all, I want to thank county engineer Pamela for all the work you do and the commissioners. We recognize, it's a lot in Lancaster County and sometimes you feel like your need is more important and you guys do a great job. So we thank you for all the things you do for Lancaster County. But we are located at 5,001 South First Street. That's between Old Cheney and Pioneers, just east of Highway 77. I do have a number of people too, from Lincoln City Church here, show support as well. I would like to acknowledge their presence as well. We have probably the youngest people from the crowd as well. If you, from Lincoln City Church, if we could just stand and acknowledge, you know, so.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of them.
So, they're all going to speak. Oh, no, I'm kidding. We're going to spare you some time. But we have, you know, we've been a church in this community for 27 years. And 16 years at that location. And we have a one-mile stretch between the two roads, Old Cheney and Highway 77, that has needed to be paved for a long time. Currently, the only very active place is the Lincoln City Church. I, I, I think as I go on, as Pam was giving a report here and talking about different roads that were maybe graded and right-of-way was purchased, you know, that was us, you know? And I'm looking at some of the broken roads up there and I'm thinking, I'd like to have one of the broken ones, at least, you know, that would be a good problem to have right now. But the reason we're here too, though, it's a lot of families, 300 families from all walks of life that are part of this community very, very strongly. We are not a commercial entities like a business would, so we probably don't generate a lot of attention. But it's a lot of people that live and work and are part of, of this community in a very healthy way. Our ministries have been limited greatly. Weekly meetings and stuff, honestly, for sometimes for safety of our kids and, and different things like that, we have many families that come. The lighting is terrible. There, there's no lighting at all. We've had some problems with vandalism. I think that paving would go a long way in making it, making it a legitimate road. But the truth is, it also is hindering our future development. We can't really progress without having an idea of what we can do. We've been there for 16 years waiting for the same thing. Only one-mile stretch. Another thing is, that kind of goes against us as well, is when the issue of the traffic count. And I've noted that whenever the traffic count is made, usually it's Monday through Friday and they take it out. But our most busy time is Saturday and Sunday, mostly Sunday. So we, we kind of get forgotten because we don't generate the kind of count that's needed in the week. But if we were paved, we, by all means, will have more activity there. So what we've resorted to is doing a lot of things in small groups and in people's homes during the week, just to kind of limit the kind of times that parishioners can come and worship or do any community activity. just to kind of limit the kind of times that parishioners can come and worship or do any community activity. We kind of limit that during the week. So I want to just share with your concern and all the people here showing the support with many, many others that could not make it, that if you could consider putting us on the radar again on paving that one-mile stretch for us between Old Cheney and Pioneers. Thank you for your time.
Next was Ken Hybrink. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
You bet. Okay, I'm Kent Hybrink and I'm Don's neighbor, oops. And I have to agree with what he said. And I understand you don't have the money and we're in a catch-22 because the city doesn't want to pave it, the county doesn't want to pave it. But what do we do until something can happen so that something doesn't happen? And I work construction and we've got job sites around Lincoln and outside of Lincoln. And the dust gets bad enough on those that they make them come out and water it down. And the EPA says that we can't do anything about it because it's a public road. But when it's not safe, when it's not healthy to breathe and you can't see what can be done before it gets paved, that's, I guess, all I got to say for now.
Thank you. I think that's something that we'll continue to follow.
The next three, if you'd come forward, Diane Hybrink, Brent Erlinson, and Sandy Smith. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening. Just kind of the same, I was here last time we had a meeting and really would like our 98th Street to be considered, maybe moving up forward a little bit from where we are right now. I know I've asked for traffic counts. I don't know if there's anything new or if we've had that new electronic counting done, or how recently that's been done. But in our neighborhood now, I know that we've gone back and forth between rock and gravel and all of that just to kind of keep that road in a decent condition. We honestly have rush hour traffic on our street now and it's, it is that bad. You can't go to your mailbox. You can't be outside. You can't, you know, you just can't live outside at our place anymore and it's too bad. You can't grill out. You can't really, you know, you just cannot be outside.
Commissioner Shores.
Could you give us your specific address?
I am at 1601 North 98th. So just a block north there on 98th. The intersection there is, I think, becoming quite dangerous to get, you know, cross or to turn left or right onto Holdridge Street as well. I think you'll see a lot more traffic on that. So even slower speeds, anything like that would be, you know, somewhat of a benefit for us. So just want some consideration to maybe move that a little bit forward. You know, I think we're looking at increased traffic as they build all of those houses north of us and south of us. I mean, there are just more and more rooftops going up constantly. So I think we won't see less traffic. And I'm surprised to see, honestly, on this list that the traffic is as low on this count as it is. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Avery has a question.
I do. Is your house located close to the road?
Unfortunately, it's a sticky wicket for us. I don't like asking for pavement because I know they're gonna take 60 foot of my front yard and I'm 100 foot off. It's a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
My name is Brett Erlinson and I live at 1740 Southwest 33rd Street. I'm in the Timber Ridge Homeowners Association. I'm the president of that group. The city has informed us that we are on the calendar to have a major road construction project on West A Street affecting us in the year 2021. That project will go from Cottington to the west edge of the city limits of Lincoln, which at this point is Southwest 36th Street. The next major intersection is Southwest 40th Street, where just last year, we finally had the ability to go from A to O Street with the bridge that goes over the railroad, that we had been waiting 10 years for that to, that stretch of road to reopen. I guess thankfully, the county jail came in and that was a priority. In order for the residents of our area to handle the road construction project that's going to be disrupting their lives in 2021 in a major way, they're gonna, the city is gonna make that according to standard. It's gonna be widened. It's gonna be improved traffic flow. However, there's gonna be a quarter mile that is still gonna be under the county maintenance that isn't gonna be touched at least until after 2023, according to this particular list of projects. At the point at which that does happen, there will be excess construction that will be affecting our homeowners who will see the road torn up twice at that point. So I would just like that particular project be taken into consideration because there is extra traffic that is happening in that intersection from 36th to 40th and north and south. So that could be an opportunity to also improve that intersection as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Sandy Smith. I live at 18303 North 162nd Street, which is about on the corner of 162nd and Davie Road. I started approaching the Board of Commissioners back in 1995 when Don Thomas and Bob worked when we're on the board. I had real concerns at that time because there had been a death on that road. Budget constraints have come up through the years and I kind of backed off. But I have some real concerns again, as I am speaking with Pamela, she does also. Just some information for you. There are now corn mash trucks traveling down 162nd from Adams, Nebraska to the Mead Cattle Company. They start early in the morning, sometimes four or five o'clock in the morning, I can hear them start going by. They do have a extra supports on their trucks, I guess, so that they're hauling around 90,000 pounds down that road every day. At one day, I tried to stay out there and count the trucks going by, but the dust was so bad I couldn't stand it. They, I did find out today that they've renewed the contract with the Mead Cattle Company. There will be two to three trucks a day continuing for the next two years. Northeast Lancaster County has not met with very many improvements up in that area. 162nd is a street that connects between Highway 6 and the Ashland Road. I know that there was some improvements done on the bridge at Salt Creek with some federal monies and I know there was some improvements done at the bridges at Rock Creek with some federal monies. At that time, that's when the engineering was done and that we were put on a one-to-six-year plan way back then. It dropped off, but I want it to be brought forth in front of this group again, that there are some very big concerns. With the paving and with the grading of the road right now and the traffic on that road, we're not meeting what we deemed to and I would hate to see another tragedy happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next three would be Mark Antenson, Michael J. Whirl, and Ken Hyatt. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Mark Antenson, 1521 Southwest 30th Street. I represent the West A Neighborhood Association, whose boundaries are Southwest 40th to Salt Creek, from Van Dorn to O Street, which means we have the pleasure of having two commissioners as our representatives as we straddle Districts 2 and 3. I also have some members from our neighborhood in attendance tonight and if they'd like to stand and make their presence known, I know not everybody tonight is gonna be speaking. My concern is very similar to Mr. Erlinson's, that he spoke of the project that the city of Lincoln has committed to in the 2020-2021 timeframe to improve 1.2, or sorry, 2.25 miles of road of West A Street from Folsom to the current city limits at Southwest 36th, which Mr. Erlinson noted is not the next major intersection or logical place to end a project like this. Therefore, my ask for the commission is to look at doing this in partnership with the city since they already have a project in design phase and scheduled and funded on the books. I think it's fitting that we're having this discussion tonight in a building that recognizes the cost savings and benefits of city-county partnerships and the great benefits that those can bring to our taxpayers of the county and the city. So I think it only makes sense to look at doing this as a combined project. I'm asking for a quarter mile of road where the city is already planning 2.25 miles of major improvement to this street. I think it makes sense for the neighbors and for the taxpayers of Lancaster County to work to take advantage of these efficiencies wherever we can. The county engineer did a wonderful job of explaining the shortfall that we have and I think the only hope we have of closing that gap is to take advantage of these partnerships where we can with the city and other funding partners to get more done with the save amount of tax pays that we have. Any questions?
I guess the only question I have, and I think the previous speaker mentioned it, but I didn't catch it. What's the distance between the two points that the city's paving?
Yeah, can we switch over to the document camera here? So if you look at this map here for orientation, this is West A Street. This is Southwest 40th. This is Southwest 36th, which is basically the west city limits. This is South Cottington Avenue and then this is South Folsom. So the city is rebuilding West A Street from South Folsom to Cottington in 1920 and then is rebuilding, which is about one mile, and then 1.25 miles from Cottington to Southwest 36th, which is where the current city limits end. So what we're looking at is to continue this connection and connect us to that wonderful bridge that we now have and enjoy to finish this road project out to its logical conclusion, which is the intersection with Southwest 40th, not the arbitrary city line at Southwest 36th.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Michael J. Warner, middle initial J, last name Warner. I live out at 10220 East Oak Lane Circle, Waverly, Nebraska. I'm actually the mayor of Waverly as well. First of all, I'd like to thank Pam and her staff that sometimes it's said enough about the good job that the county roads department does do. It's probably an astronomical thing to look at trying to maintain. I also realize, I sat down and spoke a little bit with Mr. Avery, that our city is probably no different than a county, that it seems like needs always far exceed the financial resources. So it's always a matter of how can we make some of these things happen? And we have to prioritize them and thus why we have some planning meetings, hopefully, so we conduct things in an orderly fashion. I would like to speak in support of the 1 in 6 year plan of the paving of North 162nd Street. I would humbly ask that the commissioners and the engineering office think about extending it one more mile from Highway 6 to Bluff Road. That would be a missing segment there on 162nd. The traffic load right now at 148th and Highway 6 is large. There's a large amount of traffic that happens there daily. I think if that was to happen, it would help spread the traffic across multiple intersections. I just think that would be a great deal from that regard. The only other thing I'd like to add would be, I know it's not in the planning of the 1 in 6 year, but I would ask at some point, that maybe for next year, that the city would like to sit down the county, that we need to discuss finding another truck route around Waverly. I do believe that Fletcher Avenue, Pam, you can tell me, I thought it was graded and right-of-way stuff had been done years ago on Fletcher Avenue. But that's something that we'd like to look at. As the commissioners know, we have three schools along Amberly Road. That's our truck route now is Amberly Road. And the elementary, the middle school, and the high schools all along there. We field probably daily complaints from people about safety concerns or children and the lot of semi-traffic for a lot of reasons. So, but we'd just like to ask that we, maybe next year, we could sit down and discuss what we could maybe do to the point where I think the city would be willing, let's look at how we could make it financially possible. We'd be willing to probably look at funding part of that or doing something to where that could be a reality. So, other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Warner, very much.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Ken Hyatt and I go to Lincoln City Church. In the past, I was responsible for exterior maintenance. And so, especially during the summer, if we had special events and the right-of-way hadn't been mowed, I would call maintenance and they responded very well, come out and mowed. It's nice to have a nice-looking ditch if you have weddings and people are out there. So I really appreciate maintenance. They did respond when we asked for help. Even in winter time, they're very good at making sure the road is open on Sunday. And so I appreciate the maintenance people. A little bit of contact I had with them, they responded very quickly and I really appreciate maintenance. My concern, and while I'm here, is because of First Street. I don't remember exactly how long ago, perhaps 10 years, Pastor Jerry and I came to meetings like this and we asked that First Street be paved. And we were told, well, there's a system to get a road improvement. And we asked, what is that? And they said, well, first thing, if I remember correctly, is engineering. And so we asked, let's get started. The road at that time wasn't the best road. There were times, because it was not a good road, rainy weather would be a tough time to get to church. So we said, we want to improve First Street. We'd like to see that improve. Let's get started. And you did. You responded. You did the engineering. I was there to help. Questions were asked. I gave my input and engineering was completed. Second stage, what I'm calling, and I may have the stages not correct, but anyway, dirt work was next. And within a relatively quick time, dirt work began too. I don't know if there was distance of a year or two, but anyway, the road was improved. And even today, it is a good road. It has good rock and it's a nice, good road that we never had before. What I'm asking is for step three, which is pavement. And I'm just asking that we started a project, let's finish the project. I don't know about you, but when I start something, I like to finish it. I would like to see you put us back in the budget, back on the 1 in 6. I realize, as you've talked, budgets. Our church knows budgets. My household knows budgets. So I understand you can't spend money you don't have. But what I'm asking is find some money, like everybody else here at this meeting, to put us in that 1 to 6. We expect to grow. We expect to do building. But you would think people wouldn't stay away just because of the road. But I've heard that from people. I hate coming out here because my car gets dirty, which my truck is dirty all the time. But anyway, I'm just asking you reconsider. Put us back in the 1 to 6. We've asked for and we worked with you. We would just appreciate paving, like everyone else in this room, I understand. But we started a project. I'd like to see you finish that project.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next three are Jim Brown, Jason Babcock, and Vinnie Boston. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Name's Jim Brown.
I'm at eighty-seven, Fifty-Seven Bennett Road, and my concern is a quarter of a mile Bennett Road is dirt from Eighty- Seventh Street to our driveway, which poses a lot of problems for us. Pam, you indicated in your introductions that people don't pay any attention to the signage in most anywhere. It's on both ends of the road. It's dirt road, but as soon as it rains or snows, there's people stuck out there all the time. And they usually come to my door asking for help. In 2012, you bought the right-of-way to widen the road for your specifications, and a couple of years ago before that, you put in a nice concrete box culvert with, you know, rocking that whole road, which is all I'm asking for is rock. It's a simple quarter of a mile of rock. Anything, any plans for that at all?
I don't know. I'll defer to the county engineer.
So a lot of times, just to put down rock, we still have to meet, you know, back in the day, they kind of just, twenty years ago, they would just put down rock, and now we have to meet the grading standards and site distance for the road. So I have not looked at that piece of road in order to be able to answer your question. But I can look at that piece of road and see what it would take.
Okay. Like I said, I just need rock. If you ever do all these other people's projects, scoop up the rock and bring it over to Bennett Road. I'd be happy.
Yeah. I think as the county engineer indicated, that's, it's more complicated than that.
Well, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is.
No, we appreciate that information.
Okay, I just, with upcoming Beltway, I know there's going to be more and more traffic there all the time with the city limit moving further and further south. There's already more traffic on that road.
And quite frankly, that is a concern, that we'd have to look at what the Beltway plans are in that area too, and make sure we've coordinated everything with it. But we can look at that.
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Jason Babcock, and I live on Hundred Thirty-Fourth and Alvo Road, One Thirty-Four Eleven Alvo there. And we currently were being affected by the construction work that's happening on Hundred Forty-Eighth Street. Lots of traffic, I don't know, thousands now? I don't know. There's lots of rock trucks and lots of stuff going on. My concern, my one concern why I'm here tonight is it seemed like there was two or three weeks where nothing is happening on that road. And I just want to make sure that we're efficiently working through our construction. Whoever's in charge of it, I don't know who, I haven't looked all that information up, I'm sure it's out there. But I just want the engineer to understand and the rest of your team to know, we need to get that fixed. It needs to be done. That intersection on Hundred Thirty-Fourth is already a concern for me. We're going to be, we're going to pick up somebody out there sometime. You've got the high school, you have all that traffic, you have four bus routes, I think, that go from that intersection out. There's just a lot of heavy traffic, a lot of public is going through that intersection. So I'm just, I'm concerned that we're doing it efficiently. I understand it's going to have to be closed. You're going to have, you know, a week, two weeks, you know, stuff, but it's been five weeks, six weeks now, and it seems like things are, for one bridge, it seems like it's taken a lot of time. I think there could have been some prep work done, then close the road, get it put in, and do the rest of the work later. It just seemed like things have taken a long time. So that's my concern there. Maintenance-wise, I appreciate all the work that our guys do out there. They're out there working hard, you know, the Bobcat guy needs to get good on the grader too, and I think they're doing a real good job out there. So I do appreciate all the work they do. They've had to do some stuff a little quicker, and so it's not as nice all the time as it has been, but I understand the traffic out there. Of note, I thought it was funny when they had to move my mailbox for this, to get those trucks around the corner, and they had to do that, but there've been combines, twelve-row combines coming around that corner for decades. So anyway, but that's fine. But we just need to, we need to work on that. The detour, I don't think is working where you want half the traffic to go to the east. They're all coming back to the west, and so they can get down Hundred Thirty-Fourth and go into Waverly. So, anyway, as quick as you can. I understand the issue there. I think the people on Ninety-Eighth Street are seeing a lot of traffic because this H-66 bridge is closed, first of all, right? If you get that opened up, I think that Ninety-Eighth Street issue goes away a little bit, and all that traffic will come back on my road. Because all the GSK, there's a lot of GSK Novartis employees that run my road, and I am the, what did Mr. Warner say? I am the truck route right now, Alvo Road. Once you get that bridge back open, there'll be trucks on there, contractors, trucks, high school students, and buses. So it's pretty, it's a heavy road. I don't necessarily want you to pave it because then it becomes a rocket road, and so you can leave, you can leave some of those dips in there. You know, go ahead, leave a little washboard. It keeps people from racing between the wellheads. So, yeah, other than that, thank you very much. I do appreciate the county and their work here. Thank you.
Jason, I would just like to comment. Thank you for bringing up North Hundred Forty-Eighth Street, because that has been a challenge for the county. It was not something that we anticipated. I know that the county engineers talked a lot about the discovery of those boxes, those bridges that were buried. And so the timing was not conducive to do it like we normally would. Obviously, we had to make some modifications to our plans to get this construction done as soon as possible. And with the detours, I know that we've worked to do a few things, modified the traffic control devices, lowered the speed limit, but also asked the sheriff to do more patrols to make sure that the individuals who are taking those detours, who don't normally drive on gravel roads, can navigate them safely. And so, yeah, we appreciate your patience, and I know we all look forward to having a Hundred Forty-Eighth Street completed.
It'll be, it'll be a nice, nice road, and so I do hope that can be done.
Commissioner Dingman?
So...
I'm sorry, Engineer Dingman.
You know, I don't know whether that would be a promotion or a demotion, Commissioner Wilton, but...
You're sitting up here with us, so I guess you're a commissioner.
My once-a-year, my once-a-year sit with you guys. That is Bridge G-11 on Alvo. H-66 is just around the corner on Hundred Twelve Street. You know, we know we're going to have to do some work on H-66 yet too, sadly, and we were delayed with the work on H-66 because we have a large bat colony in the area. Who knew, right? I am required by federal standards to protect bats. And so we actually have to hire a bat biologist that comes out and tells us, like, this is a bat tree. Anyway, so we have a few bat areas. Usually they're Commissioner Shore's areas, bat-infested. But in this case, she's rich in bats. In this case, we were a little surprised to find that we had a major bat colony in this area too.
I'm not sure bats were native to Nebraska, were they, on the High Prairie?
You know what? I'm an engineer, and so I can't, yeah, I can't comment to that.
I think we'd have to ask a biologist about that.
That's a biologist question. We did limit those construction jobs to thirty days. Unfortunately, in the month of October, my department, we were basically mud farmers. We just kind of pushed them out here.
That was fun, too.
You know, fourth rainiest October on record. It didn't really help us get these construction projects done. So we are very close with the first box. We are going to be starting on the second box. And unfortunately, given the instability of these structures, there was not anything we could start on in advance, just because they are so touchy. And the picture in my presentation of Mr. Packard, the bridge engineer, standing in the water, he is actually standing in, he's in the area of the bridge underneath the center line of Hundred Forty-Eighth Street, and he's chest-deep. And so you saw him when he stood up. He's not short, so we know we have a problem there, and the structures are all very unstable. It's a bummer, and I appreciate your patience with it, and we'll continue to work with the neighbors in the area to do what we can do.
I'm keeping my box culvert rip-wrapped good, so that front side will be okay. The backside's washing out, but you'll get to that one eventually, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Vinnie Boston, Ten Nine Hundred North Hundred Seventy-Sixth Street. My concern is H-119. So you're familiar with 120. Can you tell me the weight rating on that bridge?
I don't have that with me tonight.
Say, ten tons, sounds?
It is not a good bridge. I did nickname it the Bad Boyfriend Bridge for a reason, yeah. No, it's not.
So I guess mine is more of a concern of safety. It took, what, fifteen months on that bridge, roughly, on 120?
Probably in that range.
From when it was closed to open? So if you close 119, and me being, one of the only houses down, or two small children, and we have an emergency, can you tell me the weight of a fire truck? Or the garbage trucks to get to me?
So, you know, this isn't supposed to be a dialogue with you, and so although I appreciate your questions, and I can get to them later, you know, what I will tell you is because you're a fire truck or a garbage truck, we disclose to the city of Waverly Fire and Rescue when we close any of these structures. And any structures countywide, we have a notification system so that the fire department is aware they're not supposed to use that bridge. You know, I've joked with the commissioners, but it's not a funny joke, that, you know, the bridge doesn't know you're a fire truck. It just knows you're too heavy. And so the same with the garbage truck, you know, they're not supposed to go on a structure that's weight-rated. Sadly, when I have to close bridges unexpectedly, we have not done the design. So when we are to the point where we close a bridge without notice, now I'm in the scenario where I haven't done the design to know if it needs to be replaced or closed. And so then I have to stop and do the design, and then once we do the design, sometimes we determine I can't fix it. Sometimes I can fix it. And then I always, when I do figure out what I can do to fix it or replace it, have to go get environmental permits. And getting those permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, which I'll tell you your permit, they do have an emergency permit process, which I would think would be like two weeks, right? Except for H-120, it was three months. And it was three months of me going down and saying, look, I'm going, these people are going to be trapped if I have to also close H-119. So it was very concerning to me. We are to the point where we are nearing completion of the design fix for H-119, although there's some complexities with that too. And we hope to construct that, we hope to be able to construct that in the spring. Of course, we're going to have to get a permit. We've already done the investigation, and I'll submit that as an emergency permit, too.
I guess my concern is just shutting it down just the necessary amount, not fifteen months, because we will have no, if we choose bus routes, we won't have access to bus routes. We won't have access to having road graders being snowed in. We won't have access to any of that. So we'll just kind of be deserted out there.
Well, and I think that's something that we'll follow up. I mean, I know that whenever we do close a bridge, those are things that we take into consideration, but, I mean, we've heard many times from the county engineer that we have standards that we have to follow. And so while it may be, you know, disruptive, I mean, it's for safety reasons, and so we don't close bridges that we don't need to. But I think we will follow up. I mean, there's something, because of the number of bridges in the area that are closed or are proposed to be replaced, those create challenges. And so we'll, I mean, and we have, I mean, Pam and I have talked about a lot of the houses in the area and how the bridges being closed affects the individual homeowners. And so we'll need to continue to do that, and as we move forward with the plan, we'll have to keep that in mind and communicate with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, the next three are Doug Hanson, Tim Sullivan, and Denise Arnold. Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank Ms. Dingman and Commissioner Shore and other commissioners for allowing this public hearing. My name's Doug Hanson. I live at 905 Larkspur Drive in Hickman, Nebraska, and I'm also the mayor of Hickman, Nebraska. Again, thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak in support of the Fifty-Fourth Street work, paving that, it's, I believe, graded, rocked, ready to go for paving, but from Roca Road to the city of Hickman. Also, Sixty-Eighth Street, which Pam had shown on her display, from Roca Road to the city of Hickman, so I am in support of that definitely. A little bit about the traffic counts, we did, the city did conduct our own traffic counts in March of 2016. It was released in June of 2017. But right now, we have about seventy-three hundred vehicles going north from Hickman Road on Sixty-Eighth Street and about seventy-one hundred vehicles going south. Just to give you a little bit of background in the growth in Hickman, I think most folks realize that Hickman is one of the fastest, if not the fastest-growing city in the state of Nebraska, and the Beltway is going to make a difference with that as well. In March 2014, those counts were somewhere around fifty-three hundred. It's a twenty-seven percent, approximately twenty-seven percent increase in three years. So we are working through right now, conceptually and in design, for widening Sixty-Eighth Street within the city limits of Hickman. We certainly want to connect that, obviously, and work with Pam and the county engineer's office to do that. One road that should be on your horizon if it isn't, and that is South Sixty-Eighth Street. I think you've maybe heard about the October 25th fatality that happened out there. If you've been on South Sixty-Eight, this is the road between Hickman and Norris School District, and actually Hickman to First Road. That's a very narrow road. There's no easy way to get off of that road. We have fifteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old kids getting out from Norris, traveling on that road. Just put that on your horizon, put that on your radar. It's going to need shoulder work. There's no easy way to get off of that road, and we've got kids out there driving. Remarkably, I think there were fourteen kids that were involved in that accident, and all fourteen had their seat belts on. So I think that's remarkable just in itself. But again, thank you for the opportunity, and I just want to say thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor Hanson.
Do you solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Tim Sullivan. I'm a physician and a business owner on West A Street. I live in Meadowview Subdivision. I'm here to address three specific issues and a general comment. First of all, the plan for overlay on Meadowview Subdivision. I represent the Meadowview Subdivision HOA. We are a fast-growing homeowners' association with multiple buildings and multiple growth as the whole town sees. The pavement is deteriorating quickly. We have now moved into the one-year plan, which we really appreciate, and we're here to support the engineering department in overlaying the Meadowview Homeowners' Association per the plans of the county. We would also speak toward other overlay projects. There are several others in the county that we would like to say that it's a good idea to continue this. It's a new thing for the county to do, to bring everything up to specifics and to bring everything up to a better standard so that the county's not out there patching all the time. The crews come out there a couple of times a year now, just pulling in patches and such. The second thing we would like to support is the culvert replacement on West Pioneers at Ninety-Eighth Street. The loss of that bridge by Conestoga Lake has been a real bad problem for the neighborhoods out there. It's also diverted traffic to West Van Dorn Street, which becomes a huge dust pile and a dust bowl. We would like to see that culvert... We would like to see that culvert replaced and bridged as soon as possible. I know there's some challenges with various other government entities that you have to deal with. But that one's been really a kind of a thorn that it's, it's going to be an easy fix. It just got to be done. It's going to be easy. Okay, the third thing is, as a business owner on West A Street, I also stand in support of the extension of the proposed West A improvement from 36th, Southwest 36th to Southwest 40th. It doesn't make any logical sense, as the two speakers before me have mentioned, not to go ahead and consider that as an extension of the, of the 2021 building for that. It's just less than a quarter of a mile. Be pretty easy to get done. It would really help with the jail and all the traffic that's going around the other. In general, my last comment is, the county board and the commissioners have it within their power to adjust the finances of the road department. One of the things that hasn't been discussed tonight is perhaps plead or an implore to reconsider the budgetary considerations you guys have done over the last year. I would like to ask you to consider increasing their overall budget from where they stand now by a significant amount. I know that everybody complains about property tax and things, but this is a fast-growing city and a fast-growing county. We are rich people. We have a lot of money here. We can afford to spend a little bit more on the roads that support us every day. It will be safer for us. And as a physician, I'm keenly aware of safety issues. And I want to make sure that that is part of the consideration for these roads. So if you would, consider changing your budgetary support for the county roads department by increasing it if you possibly could. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I don't see any questions.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Do you solemnly swear from that the testimony you were about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Hi, my name is Denise Arnold. And I'm originally from New York. And no, I didn't come here to see the eclipse. However, I did come here for a better life. I've watched New York grow. I've seen the traffic build. I've seen the roads crumble. So when I came here, I learned a lot. I didn't expect your roads were as bad as you said. So something to look into. Thanks for that, giving that brief summary of everything that's going on. The first thing I want to bring up is more of a general thing. Basically, what I have noticed, I don't know if you have control over this. I've seen construction, and I don't know if anyone else has, but the cement dust is going in the air, meaning they are not using water when they are drilling. So what happens is, you breathe in that dust, and now it gets hard, it gets hard in your lungs. This I've seen a few times. The most recent one I saw is on 27th and Superior. Okay? Definitely something to take into consideration. Now, if you're looking for my money, I don't believe in really raising taxes. How about redistributing it? I remember during the city council meetings, they were saying, "Let's spend millions of dollars on a library downtown." Really, isn't that nice and lovely? But is it really a necessity? No, I think safety is in our roads, right? The other thing is, kind of a small thing, but I think it's going to make my house collapse eventually. I don't know of anyone near 48th Street, Adams and O. There is a guy, apparently, that drives around with the music being so loud that it actually shakes the ground. My house is literally shaking. So what can we do about that? I like loud music, too. We all like different styles. But this guy is vibrating the entire block. And if you go around there, you can ask the cops. I'm sure they can tell you who that is. Now, and one more thing, when I first came here, definitely do not put any more bike paths in the middle of the road. That is super dangerous. I don't know what street that is downtown, but an out-of-towner that comes in wouldn't know, and they're going right down the middle. So I would not suggest in the future, if you plan on doing bike trails, putting it in the middle of the road. Now back to the main reason I'm here. I found a great church, Lincoln City Church, on First Street, Old Chaney, between Old Chaney and Pioneers. And we really need this, the pavement there. Literally, I think I could feel my vertebrae and discs move out when I'm driving down that road. My husband's brakes recently fell out. Can I blame him exactly on the road? No, but there's a lot of shaking going down that road. Now, you saw all the people that stood up before, right? Guess what? By next year, it's going to be so many people that this room is not going to be big enough. So I really want you to take into consideration, find areas where you can save. And also those roundabouts? I'm going to tell you something. When you start to grow, people are not going to be so courteous. And it's going to be like Big Ben, going around in circles. Trust me. Look at Over and Underpasses, okay? I know you have a lot of beautiful parks, but think of structures that could be beautiful that go through it. You don't have enough gridlock, you know, like roads going this way in a checkerboard fashion. That's why you're going to have this issue. And as you grow, as you will, because I see this city growing and being greater than it ever can be, think about these things in the future when you lay the plans down. But definitely, we need a road on First between Old Chaney and Pioneer. Thank you so much for your time. It's been a long night. It's happened here, and I think they maybe did that on purpose. And sorry that they put you back in the monopoly pool and be picked again. That's so unfair. Have a good night.
Ms. Arnold, really quick, just a couple of housekeeping items. Three of the items you talked about, the dust at 27th Superior, the noise issue, and the bike paths. Those are all city issues. I know you're from New York. So we're really responsible for the unincorporated areas of the county outside the city limits of Lincoln and other municipalities like Waverly and Hickman.
Oh, outside?
Yeah, and so we, and we don't have any noise ordinances in the county. We don't have that authority. But in those issues, I would communicate with the, with the city.
I definitely will.
Either the mayor's office, he has a hotline.
Week from today?
And so or else the city council.
I'll be scheduling that in. Okay, week from today. So wait a second, is that on Monday or on Tuesday?
Monday evenings are their city council.
Are they open late on Monday next week?
I don't know what time their, their meetings are scheduled. But there's also a mayor's hotline.
I'll check. Well, I told you the main reason I came, so I guess that kind of fits the criteria. I figure you all must talk.
Yes.
So you could definitely talk about in the meantime, you know, get them ready for me.
Yes. And we do appreciate, we appreciate your information, Ms. Arnold. The county engineer has a comment, I guess.
So I just, I just want to know, and I, we do communicate. Lonnie Berklin, this, from the city, is here in the audience tonight. And we do try not to, like, push so that people have to go shop to find answers. And so I'm sure that Lonnie has noted your issue. But just so you know, the city, if you get to the city-county website and in the search bar you type in "action," it will take you to the Action Center. You can actually report loud music there without calling the 911 center, and they will send an officer out. And so if you take a look in that Action Center, it's very handy. And they will respond back to you what action they took.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's not so much the loudness because he's driving by. It's the actual probably damages doing to all the buildings on that street. Thank you.
Okay, the, the next three are Danae Kalkowski, Silas Clark, and Dave Watts. Do you solemnly swear from that the testimony you were about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, members of the commission. Danae Kalkowski, I'm appearing tonight on behalf of Matadoll LLC. They are a property owner who owns a property on the north side of Firethorne and currently in the process of doing some development there. So I'm here tonight on their behalf to speak really in support of the 2018 road and bridge construction program, particularly the funding that's shown for the continued pavement of 98th Street, basically north of Old Chaney. Matadoll supports really all funding to get 98th Street designed and paved all the way to O Street and then obviously even its continuation to the north. But I think that's an important section to get paved, obviously, all the way to O Street because it'll provide sort of a de facto little bypass on the, the east side of town until we actually get to the bypass there. So we just wanted to appear tonight in support of that. We thank you for continuing to prioritize that funding because I think it is an important improvement for our county and our, and our citizens of the Lincoln area, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear from that the testimony you were about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Silas Clark, city administrator in Hickman. Been in front of you quite a few times. Mayor helped me out tonight, too, which is great. So just one more point is, I just want to say over the past few years that myself and also the other city officials in Hickman have watched, you know, the county's budget process pretty closely. And if my memory serves me correct, this year, the county, all of your departments were asked to come in at a 97% budget. And then, you know, additional, if my memory serves me correct, it was a few million dollars more was cut out of the county engineer's budget. And we do thank you. I know you did put 1 million more back into it. If I remember right, it was about 5 million. I could be wrong. But somewhere around there. My point really being is, you know, really asking for your support for those county, for the county engineer's budget in the future. I know you have very many different departments and conflicting interests out there. But, but for the people in Hickman that I speak for and also everybody in the room, it seems like there is a lot of support for those roads that are out there and the bridges that need to be repaired. And people are willing to pay for that, you know, maybe even on the tops of some other services. So I just wanted to say that very broadly and appreciate all of your assistance. And we've, like I said, last time I was here, we've always had a great partnership with the county and with the county engineer. So thank you.
Yeah, Silas, I'll just point out that where the budget worked out is we requested that 97%. And so most departments did provide that. But the county engineer's budget, we did increase that over a million dollars over last year's budget. Last three years, we've increased her budget by $4 million. And so while we're not able to fully fund her requests, I mean, we, we have made significant investments in her infrastructure. And so for that reason, you know, a couple commissioners have started a project kind of to work with the city of Lincoln. We talked about, you know, we had a couple of people talk about collaborating with the city. You know, the city's undergoing an infrastructure project that they're going to start looking at ways to improve the, the city's infrastructure. And we're going to hopefully work with them and work on a similar project in the county. And that way, moving forward, we can look at ways that we can finance our infrastructure needs. Because, you know, we have several major projects coming. And it's going to be very costly. So, but we do appreciate your, your partnership and your willingness to-
No, I appreciate that information.
Come here this evening, and we look forward to continue our dialogue with Hickman, Waverly, and the other incorporated communities in our county.
Yep, and I will be one of the members of the new task force, so will the mayor. So we appreciate to be around the table for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you solemnly swear from that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Dave Watts, Waverly, and also on property on North 112th between Holdridge and Adams. I've been here a few times, asking the county to consider putting 112th on the 1-6. We see traffic continue to increase. Last year, I figured out the way to reduce traffic on your road is you take the bridge out south of Holdridge on 112th. And then you take the bridge out north of Fletcher on 112th. And then you leave the bridge out on Alvo Road, just east on 112th. So unfortunately, Pam and her crew repaired those bridges and they're open again. And traffic is back up. And talking about Pam and the county engineering, I applaud you on, on your efforts to, you know, streamline and, you know, manage, you know, not only the, the county crews with GPS. We've talked about GPS before. It's a great tool. And applaud you for doing that. And also, you know, looking at ways to stretch the budget and efficiencies in design. You know, box culverts, you know, nobody does bridges anymore. So, I mean, the county's doing a great, doing a great job at stretching the tax dollar. But on 112th Street, when she did account, Pam, I think, had account done, or the county engineering did account in 2016. And I'm guessing that maybe it was shortly after the bridges were reopened. But the count on that had historically been close to 400 cars per day or vehicles per day on that road. Pam, I keep saying Pam. The department did a count in 2011. Oh, I'm sorry. In 2016, early, and the count came in at 301 vehicles per day on that road, which I still think is due to bridges being out or shortly after bridges were reopened. I hired Alfred Benish Company to come out and perform a traffic count on 112th Street, specifically between Holdridge and Adams. They came out and completed the count. And the average volume, volume per day vehicles is at 440 vehicles per day between Holdridge and Adams. I also talked the last year, I was, last year when I was here, about a veterinary clinic that was, had applied for a permit to, to build out there. That building is now completed and should be opening soon. I have some letters from Benish documenting that information. They do not have a traffic count, but Frank Doland, based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual, a 5,000-square-foot animal clinic will generate approximately 220 cars, vehicles, per day. If that is close to the ITE numbers, that is going to run our numbers to 660 vehicles per day on 112th Street. I wish the county would, I know they say we have a threshold at so many vehicles per day. That's when it goes on the books to be paved. I know funding's tight, but, you know, I, I think, I, I think the county owes it to the taxpayers to say, "This is a threshold." When we cross the threshold, that's when we consider paving it, and we look at getting it paved. It seems like we, you hit 600 vehicles per day, per day, and some other project has moved ahead. That one's pushed behind. I think you guys need to, the commissioners need to look at some type of a threshold on when we're going to pave, and then put it in the 1-6 and try to get it paved. You know, I agree with, with a couple of fellows that talked about, you don't have the money for it. We need to figure out a way to get the money for it. Because when your roof's Lincoln, leaking on your house, you don't say, "I don't have the money for it." In two or three years, your roof's gone. I mean, you know, you're, you're stewards of, of our county. I know it looks real good on a resume to say, "I held taxes down in 2016, and I lowered taxes in 2017." But our roads continue to deteriorate. Our bridges continue to deteriorate. I mean, you're running a business here, you know? You don't need to be career politicians. We're all business people. You understand you have to invest in your infrastructure. And I guess I would encourage you to consider looking at improving the budget, finding the money for these projects. I think Pam and the, and the department is doing a great job at stretching those dollars and being efficient. And there's always, I always call them, I mean, I did 12 years on the Board of Education back home. And I always called them the vocal minority. Those are the ones you're going to hear about, the guys that are complaining about taxes. But I think the majority of the people in the community want good roads, want good bridges, want good infrastructure. Just for your information, they also did a count on Holdridge when they did the 112th Street. Eastbound was 1,743, westbound was 1,699 vehicles per day, for a total of 3,442 vehicles per day on Holdridge at 112. The last count he went back to was 2011. That count was 2,250 vehicles per day. So it's an increase of, what, 1,250 vehicles per day on Holdridge. I think if you look at the continued growth east of Lincoln, you're going to see continued traffic on 112th Street. We got, it's a connection from the interstate to, I, I mean, it's a connection from interstate down to Old Chaney, which is now paved. I would never drive down 84th Street and hit 42 traffic signals to get to Old Chaney. And most people won't drive over to 148th. So the traffic continues to pick up on 112. And, you know, I don't- And, you know, I don't like dust, nobody likes dust. I can live with it, but it's the maintenance of the roads and the cost to keep those in good repair that justifies looking at paving. So I would encourage you guys, the commissioners, to consider putting that back on, or putting it on the one and six and try to get it into the schedule. When the vet clinic opens, I think we'll see another big bump in the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Thank you.
For your input.
Okay, the next three are Marlon Johnson, Seth Rye, and Lynn Lenhoff. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Marlon Johnson. I live in Cass County, Nebraska. However, I do own, my wife and I own the farm that's between H-119 and H-120 on the east side of the road. And first of all, I'd like to commend Pamela and the engineering department for working with us as much as she could in regard to our farm equipment being, having access. There is no other access into that farm without going across one of those bridges. And much of my equipment, my trucks honestly, exceed the capacity of one-twenty, and that's just not an option for us. One-nineteen, I'm really going to be sorry when that thing closes because I will be limited. And I'm sure we'll work out something as far as getting my crops planted on that place and in the spring, and hopefully it won't stay open that, or I mean, stay closed that long, that we'll have trouble getting the combine back in there to harvest things. So in regard to Mr. Boston's comment earlier, I would echo much of that, although I can tell you that one-nineteen does carry a fire truck over it. Couple weeks ago, I had a fire in my combine on that particular place, and that was really the quickest way to get back in there. Fortunately, it wasn't serious, the combine could be repaired and was going the next day. But these things all need to be considered, and I know that you do, but the timeframe is, is the thing that I would ask, that you accelerate them as much as humanly possible to it. And I realize, I farm, I know what the weather's like, and sometimes your hands are just tied. But that's, I, I just can't emphasize enough, being able to work with the engineering department in terms of having access into that place, not only for myself, but for the people who are locked in there as well. So. The second comment that I want to refer to is more so from the Eagle-Alvo Rural Fire District. We do have some sections over in the east end of this county, and it was brought to my attention a while back, particularly Hundred and Seventy-Sixth Street, north of Fletcher, how those roads were closed for a lengthy period of time, what seemed to be, I'm going to say, simple culverts to be redone. We're all concerned on, and I'm Secretary-Treasurer, like I say, the Rural Fire District, but we're all concerned about response time. And even though that, those particular sections are not in our district, we're concerned about ones that may be in the future, or we're concerned as well about mutual aid response. And if our fire trucks can't get there to help out whomever in time of need like that, that's, that's a very serious consideration. So what the fire department wanted me to ask is that if some simple maintenance could be done to some of the culverts, such as what was done on Alvo Road just west of Hundred and Ninetieth Street, that repair was done in relatively short time. I'm not exactly sure what all was wrong and what was involved, but the repair didn't take long, it was very rapid. We would ask that some of these other culverts, you know, and I realize it's a case-by-case basis, but these other culverts on these rural roads receive that similar attention. I wouldn't entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Dingman has the response.
So sadly, although I would like to tell you I could guarantee that we can keep that bridge open until you plant, the factor for me as an engineer and, and what I have to, what I am required by my code of ethics and by the rules to adhere to is, is the bridge, by the definition from the Federal Highway Department, a clear and present danger to the public. And so, you know, Mr. Packer and I are going to continue to try to work with you to, to start that project after you plant. But if we were to really get hit this spring, that's not something I can sadly guarantee. And, and again, we'll do everything we can, but I might not be able to get, I mean, I prayed all summer, because that's all I had, that I didn't have to close both of those bridges and landlock you from your ground, as well as the other gentleman who spoke, because we're that close, and it was, it was very scary for me. So, and that's why we sent you the letters, and that's why we wanted you to know what was going on. So in regards to the other bridges, or other box culverts closed on Hundred and Seventy-Sixth Street, you know, we always have that moment where it looks like it's an easy fix and it's not. One of those culverts is one that I have a NEMA grant for, so if I start on it, I lose the seventy-five percent that they've said they'll pay. We're poor, I can't afford to lose the seventy-five percent, so I'm trying to hold on till they support that. But in addition to that, one of those culverts, for whatever reason, the road is not in the center line. And so, we can't rebuild a culvert on ground we don't own, and I don't know how that ever happened. These things do happen occasionally in the county, and so that's made that corridor extremely complex. We were going in and backfilling those culverts, and it got to the point with the two that are closed on Hundred and Seventy-Sixth, that they were kind of falling in in the night again. And so we'd pack it in with dirt and it'd fall in, and we do try to pack it in with dirt on culverts to see if we can stabilize them, and sometimes it works, and sometimes they just become unstable. But we are working on the one culvert to the south, and we'll continue to try to move forward with NEMA for the Hazard Mitigation Grant on the culvert to the north.
I sincerely appreciate that. And, and again, if, if our communication is open, if as soon as you see that you are going to close one-nineteen, I mean, I, I would be crazy if I didn't just jump on the planter and, and plant corn a week early, if, if we can next year. But, you know, communication's going to be the key, we all know that.
And just why I have you at the podium, so I have witnessed that on occasion you do plant extremely close to the edge of Salt Creek, and I just want you to know-
I don't farm next to Salt Creek.
Don't farm next to Salt Creek, okay. Well, I just want you to know, I do, I do see farmers who farm very close to the edge of Camp Creek and Salt Creek, and, you know, those banks are unstable, and so I, I do care about your personal safety. So if I, if, if I was hardcore as an engineer, I'd tell you that the failure of that embankment is probably two times the depth of the channel, so that may be as close as you want to farm to the edge.
Well, stop raising taxes on us and I won't keep encroaching.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
I still care about your safety, though.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Hi there, my name is Seth Rye. I live in Lincoln at roughly Fourteenth and Pine Lake. I have a daughter that goes to school at Norris. That's the main reason why I'm here today. I do want to thank you guys for the roadwork that you guys do, do along Sixty-Eighth Street as far as maintaining it. I think that it's far more efficient than what I see in the city as far as when there's potholes and things like that. I do want to give you guys some praise for cleaning up the roads as they become dangerous. As far as Sixty-Eighth Street goes, when the accident occurred here about a week ago, I was driving probably about five to ten cars back from the initial accident. So I got to drive by the bulk of what caused it. About three cars ahead of me, an SUV went down into the ditch and had a lot of trouble getting out. Over the years, I've been driving that route, I've seen a lot of cars end up in the ditches along the ways, sometimes they'll, they'll be propped right up in between each of the ditches. If you guys are considering widening the roads along there, I would strongly encourage you to try to get a soft shoulder in sooner than later to try to help with some of that. I think it maybe could have saved some lives along the way. You know, obviously, I'm not trying to put that blame on anyone here today, but given recent actions, I really think we need to take a look at that road in specific and see if there's anything we can do to make it safer. With that in mind, I also think that the connection between Sixty-Eighth Street and Seventieth, if you guys can figure out a way to do an on-ramp system there, you know, I think the gal from New York is along, along the right path, that I think that some foresight from this board on the surrounding community can really benefit Lincoln a lot too, in some of the traffic that, that is created, that if we can have better infrastructure surrounding the community, I think that that can, that can help alleviate some of the stress inside of the city as well. So thank you guys for your time, and I hope you guys take some things into consideration along Sixty-Eighth Street especially.
Thank you. Commissioner Shore.
This seems like a good time as any. And thank you, Seth, for mentioning that recent fatality, our hearts go out to that family. It was also mentioned by City Administrator of Hickman as, as well as, as the mayor. Over the last two weeks, I have heard from numerous constituents in the southern part of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and they've all written or called with, with great passion. And those that could not be here tonight, I promise that their letters and their correspondence would be entered into the record, copies of which have already been provided to the county clerk's office. But I do want to read the names of the people who have, who have reached out. Darren Ivy, who is the publisher and co-owner of The Voice News, Brent Davis, the majority of these are parents or grandparents, and, and those that frequently drive the roads around the Norris schools. Brent Davis, Eric Jones, Adam German, who is the Assistant Fire Chief of Portland, Jennifer Amon, Kristy Van Kant, Irene and Charles Severin, Greg Disboto, Alicia Vineyard, Ashley Coolman, Melinda Corbell, Carrie Ann York, Jared Garner, David Dorn, who is with the Firth Rural Fire District, Scott Waters, Chelsea Reynoldson, Sherry Egerton, Carrie Hoover, Mary Beth Helmink, and Megan Attis. And we also did receive a very heartfelt letter from Colleen Lovett, and I know each member of the board expresses our sympathy to that family on their loss. This is not a new problem that we've heard from constituents about the concerns of the growth of the North Public School District and the amount of traffic that that growth has caused. Two, over, two thousand, two thousand one hundred and thirty-five students, I think, is what the superintendent reported earlier this year. You also have to add to that staff that travel the roads daily, as well as families that are driving and dropping off students, not to mention the student drivers themselves, a great majority of which have early permits, where they can begin driving at, at Fourteenth, the rural school permits. So that having Ben said, we know that the, the number of cars traveling on the road is, is, is never going to decrease, and the traffic now has, it's become a life-threatening concern. I will be talking with my fellow county board members on Thursday. We aren't able to take action tonight, as Chairperson Welchin mentioned earlier. I am asking that the county board set aside up to fifteen thousand dollars from our county emergency funds to be utilized for a traffic study for this segment of roadway, beginning at the Hickman, the city of Hickman, and going as far south as the county line. We received a lot of suggestions from people, soft shoulders, streetlights, slower traffic, wider intersections, I mean, the suggestions have, have been numerous, and each of, well, I shouldn't say each of you in the room are not a, are not an engineer, because I know several of you out there are, but we aren't the experts. And I would like to have traffic engineers analyze this segment of roadway to determine the best way to make sure that these students and families are safe. And so I wanted to let you know, those of you here in the room, those of you watching and those of you that will be reading the minutes in the next couple of days, to let you know that I will be making that request of my fellow board members on Thursday.
Thank you, Commissioner Shore. Ms. Dingman, apologize.
Yeah, I apologize for the delay. I, I want the people in the county to know that I take every fatality serious, and this happens to be the fortieth one in ten years, as I continue to work towards, with the board for Vision Zero, which is zero dust. I mean, I, I want to not have this. We, we need to stop this in our modern times with our roads. That, that I still intend to come forward and work on that with not only the commissioners, the sheriff's department, but with the public, to, to really work on our safety practices on our, all of our roads. But I would like to request that Commissioner Shore, if you bring forward a study that we actually study from Roca Road all the way south to Firth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please continue with the testimony.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Well, my name is Lynn Lenhoff, and it's been brought up here before about that north side of Holdridge, Ninety-Eighth Street. And I'm aware we probably don't have the money or whatever to do this year anymore to do with, you know, pave it or blacktop it like they did Adams out to Hundred and Forty-Eighth. But do you think we could find somebody to go out there and put a speed limit sign up at forty-five mile an hour? That would help quite a bit, could we get, I tell you, the baddest thing is, is these truck drivers that come down, you've got smack truck drivers going down Ninety-Eighth Street, they have no reason, there's no home being built on Ninety-Eighth. They're being built over there in Waterford Estate, and they're built everywhere else. Instead of them truck drivers don't want to go down Eighty-Fourth, they have all their stoplights, they take Ninety-Eighth and they go down Waterford Estate. I don't know why we can't stop those smack truck drivers. And even, who was it, last week, Friday, I seen a cattle truck coming down Ninety-Eighth Street. What was a cattle truck, a semi, going down Ninety-Eighth Street for? I followed him. He went down from Holdridge, down Ninety-Eighth, down to Adams, turned, went back over to Eighty-Fourth and go down. So he didn't have to fight the corner up there at Eighty-Fourth and A, I mean, Eighty-Fourth and O, and all them other truck drivers. They've been doing this for quite a while now. That's why we got so much problems on our road. You can't not keep it in good shape with all these truck drivers going down. I don't know why we can't put a sign up there, no trucks allowed. There's guys out there I know that live there, like Ken Hybrink, he had, you know, a construction company, you know, he needs to put his, you know, that's fine, I'm not worried about him. But these other ones, they need to quit using our road. And I'm talking like the guy with use Hundred and Twelfth Street, he's another guy that, he needs that dang road street too, because when they get done, if they ever get to Ninety-Eighth, they are, they're all going to go over to Hundred and Twelve. And he's going to have the same problem again. I don't understand why the county takes so long to catch up with the development. You guys are so far behind the game. When you go put that east beltway in, I think it's Hundred and Twenty-Second, we're going to have so much stuff out there, it's the year twenty, twenty-five, I think I read in the paper. That dang beltway is not going to be further enough out, it's going to be in the city limits. You got all this billing going on now, and we can't keep up with it, the city camp, or the county, whatever. I know Ninety-Eighth Street, they keep fighting over who owns it, and if you're going to tear my road up, I know what you come back and three years later and tear it up again to put the water line in, that big water line that's supposed to go through there. They came over from Ashland. Do it all at once, that's just dumb, Lincoln does that a lot. They fix a road, three years later, they come in, tear it all up, and put down more stuff. They did it down there on South Fourteenth. I used to work for FedEx, I used to put on that road all the time. They closed it down and redid it all again within a year and a half, what they already did, they had put something else in there. I don't understand, that's where all of our money goes. We tear it up, put it down, three years later, tear it all up again, because something's not done right. And we pay for it, the taxpayers do. I think it's just stupid, we keep wasting the taxpayers' money. So I just wish something could be done once, get ahead of the ballgame. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dingman.
Can I just clarify, so you're concerned about the speed limit between 98th Street, on 98th Street between Holdridge and Adams?
Right.
Okay.
Why can't we get, I've asked somebody before-
Oh, could you please come back to the microphone?
I asked somebody, I asked somebody before to put a speed limit sign out there, and they didn't do it, that was two years ago, and it still ain't done.
Well, and the county engineer's responsible for that, so we'll follow up and, I mean-
And another thing is, the people out there with me, the ones that came up today, we all had school kids there, there ain't many families out there that got school kids anymore. But by God, last year they stuck a school bus sign up, and there's only one family out there uses it now, when all the kids are grown up and gone. We couldn't get it before, but now they're out there, put one sign up. I don't, it just sounds stupid. I mean, I can't help but saying that, but I just, I don't understand these people that run this stuff, I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
So I do have the ability to do a traffic study, speed study in that area, and if the speed study determines that speeding is a problem, we can, I can bring forward a recommendation to reduce the speed.
Okay, we have one, one more person that signed up, Dustin Sutter. Do you solemnly swear a firm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Dustin Sutter, I carry a couple of different things that I do in life, one of those being a pastor at Lincoln City Church, another, I work as an engineer for Nellnet here in Lincoln. And I also want to talk about the South First Street Road. We've been doing a little bit of research, and there is a lot of other projects, not county projects per se, but we have two state projects which are actually backing up on both sides of our property, which I feel is going to force a lot more traffic down First Street. I could tell you on a Sunday morning especially, if we leave at the wrong time, we're facing traffic from another major church, Christ Place, which is just down the street from us in Old Chaney. With the new project going in at the 14th and Warlick, Old Chaney intersection there with the roundabouts, which I believe is scheduled to start in a couple of years, which would be 2020, I believe, is their slated start, to be completed by 2021, they will actually be cutting off the main access for Christ Place to let their traffic out, which means that everybody's going to have to either go through the two neighborhoods, either to the north or to the south, which I'm sure is going to upset a few people, or it will force them down Old Chaney. The problem with that is, from my understanding, the West Beltway is going to be built along that side, which is going to close Old Chaney, leaving only one place for everybody to go that's going to dump out. If they don't want to sit in the neighborhood, they're going to come down First Street and make it over to Pioneer's to 77. There are a large amount of traffic that actually comes down on a Sunday morning. I was looking at counts on the West Beltway, right now they're saying currently, well, this was actually, is it what, 2005, there was 4,000 cars per day on that Pioneer 77, slated to be somewhere around 19, almost 20,000 here by 2025 with that, with that reorganization. There's going to be a lot of that traffic, I believe, too, coming from those neighborhoods. There are two or three neighborhoods to our east, which their only option is to really get stuck on that new interchange and have to go south. Crossing that doesn't look like it's going to be a very easy thing to do, so it would be easier for them to actually go around Pioneer's Park there, or the Wilderness Park that's right next to our property, which means they're going up First Street, which is going to increase that, which is going to increase maintenance on South First Street as well. So that's just kind of a concern of mine, seeing that coming and knowing that within the next three years, we're going to have two major projects backing up on both sides, one of which is going to close down a major avenue to Highway 77 and force everybody up to Pioneer's to get out on Highway 77. That's what I have to say.
Thank you so much. I know that that was the last person that signed in. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to make a comment that hasn't signed in? Okay, just really quick, just want to point out that, oh, Commissioner Shore.
I've got two more letters on different topics that I'd like to, from constituents who are unable to be here, and I'm blessed to have very vocal constituents in my district, so I always appreciate when they reach out. Matt Steinhausen is concerned about the quarter mile of Roca B Road between South 14th and Highway 77, which Engineer Dingman mentioned earlier tonight, a very short segment of roadway with very high traffic counts that is not slated for paving due to the fact that will be closed in conjunction with the South Beltway. Craig Larmen and his wife Julie have reached out regarding Bridge N-19, that is the one just west of Southwest 98th and West Pioneer's Boulevard. It has been closed since the fall of 2015, and is being delayed due to various regulatory, federal and state permitting, and I promised I would share their concern. And finally, from some, the Egert, Keel, and LT's families are concerned about the closure indefinitely of Bridge W-122, which is on West Panama Road between Southwest 42nd and Southwest 58th. They are residents, renters, and farmland owners in that area, and are concerned about the extended closure. And as with the other letters I mentioned earlier, copies of these have been provided to the County Clerk's Office as part of the official record.
Thank you, and again, a reminder, if anyone, one second, knows of anybody who was unable to attend tonight's meeting, just want to make sure that people knew that it would be available on YouTube. The meeting will be available on YouTube starting tomorrow on our Link TV, and you can also search the YouTube for the Lancaster County Board. Ms. Dingman?
I would like to echo Commissioner Shore's statements. I also received two letters, each with three, three citizen signatures recommending that we do whatever we can to push along the replacement of Bridge W-122. But in addition to that, I also have a letter from the Lower Platte South District on the realignment of Southwest Second Street. Southwest Second Street needs to be realigned along with their reconstruction of Upper Salt 3A Dam. So, in order to get the embankment of that dam in, we're going to have to relocate the road, and the NRD has agreed to pay for all costs associated with that, but they're requesting that we put it on our 1-6.
Excellent. Are there any other commissioners who would like to make a comment for the record? Otherwise, Commissioner Brinkman?
I just want to say, this is the first time I've had a chance to sit through the 1-6. I'm the new commissioner, who was just elected last year, and this is the first meeting that I've been at where I've really felt connected to the people that live and use the infrastructure out in the county. It's been really educational, and I wanted to thank everybody. It's been a couple of hours, and I just wanted to thank everybody for taking time to come out tonight and talk to us about your concerns. Thanks.
And just to add to that, I'm, this is probably the first meeting that I've been to since I was elected three years ago, that we had a number of young people involved, and it definitely is encouraging to see younger faces, because at some point in the future, all this will be yours. And so, we very much appreciate your interest, and I hope you stay connected and interested in government. So, thank you so much. With that, I would go ahead and thank everybody for their patience this evening, we had a lot of people, and we definitely did have a lot of good information presented. We'll definitely take it under advisement, and we'll follow up where, when necessary. And if there is anything that comes up that you were not able to talk about tonight, again, please feel free to contact us by telephone, by email, or in person on a Tuesday at 9:00 AM here in this very room. With that, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Welchin?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.